Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 5th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here remotely.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Next up will be the approval of the minutes of previous meetings, seeing none. We'll move on to additions to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions? Mayor Marlin?
Yes, we'd like to reschedule item number three on the agenda to February 19th.
I, number three, under new business?
Under new business, yes.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, all right, we're striking for now. Item three at this meeting. We go on to presentations and public input. We do have a presentation tonight. Tonight, we will have a presentation from Karen Sims, the Program Director for Champaign-Urbana Trauma and Resiliency Initiative, giving us a talk on how communities can feel safe. Champaign-Urbana Trauma and Resiliency Initiative aims to create equitable, just, and loving communities in which every person is cared for, connected, supported, and well. They believe that this can be done through advocating for trauma-informed, just, and equitable policies, practices, and procedures, in addition to providing communities with the knowledge and tools they need to understand trauma and resilience so they can respond to people's needs in a culturally responsive, strength-based, and trauma-informed way. CU try builds on their current model to ensure that everyone is emotionally, mentally, and physically well. They focus on educating and training individuals, increasing the support options that increase the capacity of communities to take care of their own, and strive to impact community violence by supporting survivors and those impacted by community violence. That is a paraphrased and shortened version of what's on their website. And with that introduction, Karen Sims, you have the floor, ma'am.
There we go. So I'm going to be brief. So, right, after all of the talks, thinking about what it takes to make communities look and feel safe seems really, really important. So I want to offer a few things. The first thing I want to say is, I think the reason why I was here is, as we look and think about alternatives to what it takes to make communities well, I mean, I think this grew out of looking at the proposal around expanding law enforcement. And two things. One, there's a saying that I believe that's pretty common, is that we get sick in community and we get well in community. And how we approach what we do to make our communities feel safe is super important. And those strategies that are comprehensive and holistic, based on the research and evidence, are best. So, and what I mean by that is, where we look at things like equity and community building, and trying to think about collective healing strategies tend to be the things that create the most structural change. We can't, those strategies that are more individual, like therapy, or prevention, or even strategic interventions, based on the research and data around resilient communities, are actually wonderful and great, but not as sustainable as anti-poverty programs, or employment programs, or community-building programs, or enhancing parks and recreation. There's a lot of amazing data that says that building community connectedness is the thing that makes communities feel safe, resilient, and well. Right? And that can take on lots of different strategies and fashions. As I said, through this conversation, I think I shared what we might benefit are from collective healing strategies. And many, many communities have done that, where you build communities together to have loving and connected conversations. And if we can think about neighborhoods and communities that have been impacted by adversity or violence, mediation, community building, relationship building, and again, far more than just direct community engagement, but those things that build supportive, nurturing relationships between adults is super important. The last thing that I want to offer, and I had put together a PowerPoint, but I didn't show it, but the last thing that I want to offer is, because I know it's a priority of the council, thinking about strategic initiatives where individuals can be, become, and belong across their lifespan makes a difference in the health and wellness of a community. From my perspective, we've done a really great job of prioritizing the needs of youth. And the data around resilience, he says, if we address youth outside of the context of their families, we only have about a 20% impact to make a change. When we think about support, for example, full-service employment programs for grandmas and adults, we have about an 80% chance of making a change. But when we only focus downstream, and we think about children outside of the context of their families, their village and communities, it's very hard to make sustainable change because children can't lift the weight of the village by themselves. So, the more we can think about equity, changing those social determinants of health, changing those structures of oppression, and there are a lot of them. So, and I said that that was going to be the last thing that I would offer. One of the most profound things that I've learned is, right, there's a saying, be careful the children are watching us. And it doesn't matter sometimes what we, our alignment between what our words and our behaviors really do matter. So if I tell people that I want to be in a safe, I want them to be safe, and my strategies don't align with that, and there are lots of ways that we communicate our community is safe. Or if I tell you, you're valued, but everything in my behavior seems to devalue you, that you don't have caring, trusted adults in your school building, or your neighbors don't speak to you, or again, I hear messages that aren't aligned with the values that make me feel like I matter to you. Those things communicate far more to students, residents, and communities than anything, you know, any sort of tokenized action. People really, really do need our words and our actions to be aligned. And so often, when I talk to young people, or even parents or families, what is missed is this misalignment, where again, where we'll prioritize safety, but not invest in the things that make people feel safe. And those are community connections. Those are things that show people that we see them and value them. Those are our language and words. So if we want to have a culture of nonviolence, we can't invest and prioritize things that create more violence. And so, thinking about those alignments, thinking about those things are about what it takes to create a village of care, love, and concern. And, you know, the last thing is, we are the ones that our young people, our families, our most vulnerable have been waiting for. And it's more time for us to be strategic about being healing-centered, being more loving, being more connected, and being more compassionate.
Thank you. Karen, hold on a second. Let me give the chance for the council to ask you any questions. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Jaya.
Yeah, thank you, Karen, for this presentation. Can you talk a little bit more? I know that you and your organization have done a lot in response to an increase in gun violence. Can you talk a little bit more for folks who maybe aren't as familiar about what those efforts have looked like, and kind of how things are pivoting as our priorities as a community are changing?
Yes. So, I mean, the Trauma and Resiliency Initiative has been at the fore of working with our larger community violence response efforts, doing a couple of things. One is improving the locus of power and control and decision-making to be in the hands of people in communities most impacted by community violence. So that's improving people's capacity. That's making sure that we have a prioritization on wellness, that making sure that we provide trauma-specific treatments and interventions and support, locate it directly in the communities with people who've been most impacted, but also changing social norms and messaging around communities impacted by adversity. So, I mean, many, right, like, so there's this idea that communities impacted by adversity are deficit-based, and aren't resourced, and don't have strengths. Also, that there are ideas that it's the majority of people in the neighborhood that are involved in community violence. And unfortunately, we're only looking at about 5% of people, and most people who live in neighborhoods impacted by communities want to feel connected, want to feel safe. They love and care for each other. They are invested in the care and wellness. And so how do we make sure that everybody sees that they are the majority and not the minority, and that when there's an incident of violence, we're involved in making sure that resources are brought to the table, and that we provide care for as long as needed? Now, again, one of the things that we see across the board, I will say that, you know, the funding for addressing and supporting individuals have been impacted by community violence, a lot of that funding has been connected to the office of equity and inclusion. And I think that that is because we know, right, based on years and years of work, is that when we don't deal with those structural inequities, we repeat the cycle over and over again. And structural inequalities and inequities and oppression are the root cause of, and the contributor to most of our community violence. I want to say something super quickly. You know, Champaign County has long been, there's a, some, the study called the ACES Study, right, and that looks at contributors of childhood trauma to long-term adverse health outcomes. And Champaign County has consistently had one of the highest ACES scores of the state. And it's also why we probably have one of the, we've had historically, one of the higher rates of community violence. As long as we have moms who, right, who are of housing insecurity, who are having problems stabilizing their houses, their children will be more vulnerable. And I know cities and states who've made an investment in making sure that, again, those who've been most vulnerable or stable reduce child abuse, reduce community violence, improve educational outcomes. And so as long as we don't deal with those structural inequalities, and things like poverty, and homelessness, and housing instability for women, moms, and girls, we're going to create, we're going to perpetuate these cycles, and we're going to move into cycles of violence over and over again. And that's, I know, what we see. We see so, I mean, many of the fam, most of the families that we encounter, yes, they're impacted by community violence, but their stories, their trauma narratives have been long and deep, from both family violence, to intimate partner violence, to experiencing sexual abuse. And all of those things are connected and correlated to, you know, again, economic insecurity. That's been long and, you know, unfortunately, with longstanding.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Karen, thank you very much for your time. Okay, we will go on to, okay, there is public input for this. Does anybody else want to give public input? You will have, I guess, five minutes now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to new bus, oh, wait, staff reports? Is there any staff reports? Nope. New business. First up is Resolution Number 2024-02-002R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to accept a justice agreement grant, and that will be presented by the Police Department Chief, is that you, or Chief Bane, Deputy Chief Bane?
Good evening, everyone. I am merely here to see how the Police Department deploys their grants. So this presentation will be done by Interim Chief Deputy Chief Bane.
Hold on, there we go. Good evening. I'm here to request that you all pass the intergovernmental agreement and resolution to accept the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, commonly referred to as a JAG grant. In this grant, we are a sub-grantee with the City of Champaign, and the amount of money that I'm asking for you all to accept will be $15,235.52. That money will be designated to install the new cameras that we have, we have received, the cameras, but they need to be installed by a Motorola specialist locally that is BeckTech, and all of the money will go toward that. It's not going to pay for all of it, but it is greatly going to, to help that amount. Without your acceptance to this grant, we will have to potentially do a budget amendment, or at least request a budget amendment to get this done. A little history, we are at the end of the cycle of our equipment, as far as body cams and squad car cameras, interview room cameras, we have all the equipment in. We're waiting for a few more parts to come in so that the installation and implementation of all of it can begin. But this money will greatly help that, that installation process. So I am open to any, answering any questions that I, I can.
Maryelle.
Thank you, Mathia. And so, it sounds to me like we had not anticipated this cost for installing the, the cameras by an agent. Is that true?
It was anticipated, but the, the overall cost of the whole project was roughly double of what we had budgeted. So there were, there were several shifts of monies to just get the products. I don't know that we realized it was going to be that much, and that it had to be done by a Motorola technical specialist. But that's where we're at now, and, and really, this was, this was the best deal that we could come up with to, to replace the, the products that we have.
So I think that the body cameras and the, and the police, the squad car cameras come out of VERF, right? So is there going to be an adjustment? I know that in the, you probably haven't seen it, but we have a budget adjustment for the VERF, but it sounds to me like some new calculations need to be made.
So, yes, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that will be one of, a future ask.
Okay, all right. Well, I never turn down free money, so thank you.
Anybody else have some questions? Chandra.
I was curious as to how the, the JAG money is split between the three entities, just if you, if you happen to know.
I believe it's by population.
Okay.
Champaign has, as far as I've been involved, has always been the initial requester of the grant. And to make it, just being, being sister cities and so close, and then with the county in there too, I believe that's how it's done.
And then additionally, I feel like I remember accepting this grant last year as well. Has the figures changed at all?
They have gone up a little bit. Last year, I believe, we were right around 12,000 or something. And, and you're correct, last year, we used that money for the active shooter training.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Grace, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, oh, thanks, Jaya.
I'd like to move for approval on the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2024-02-002R, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement to Accept the Justice Agreement Grant.
Second.
Moved by Maryelle, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion?
Just a point of information. For consent, for approval? Okay, sorry.
Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a voice vote for a resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Seeing none, the resolution passes. Next item, thank you, gentlemen. Next item is Ordinance Number 2024-02-004, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Six, Omnibus. And Elizabeth Hanon, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. So, as, as Councilmember Evans indicated, this is an omnibus budget amendment, so we have a variety of items on here. I'm going to start by mentioning the largest item here, which is a $5.17 million increase in the city facility improvement project, which includes construction of design, construction and design of two fire stations. So this brings the total construction cost to 14.4 million. As you were advised on January 16th, it also includes an additional $350,000 for design, so the design cost scales with the, increases with the increase in construction cost. Smaller items include the JAG grant. I don't think I need to say more about that. In the fire department, we would rebudget from last year $78,700 in unspent training funds, which came from the Assistance to Firefighters, or AFG, grant. And also a $59,000 increase in the fire department, department uniform budget, and that's really related to higher than normal turnover. In public works, there are some savings in salary related to positions that were vacant for part of the year. And so those would be reallocated, $99,000 to contract out some tree pruning and arbor services, $50,000 towards a grant consultant to pursue infrastructure grants, $15,000 for mobile tablets for asset management software, and $25,000 for CAD procurement software optimization, and $50,000 for additional on-call traffic signal, or on-call services for traffic signal repairs. In the capital improvement fund, there are, there is some reallocation for the citywide storage rooftop solar project, which would be part of the facility, city facility project. And that's coming from bridge maintenance funds that are not needed. And then capital improvement and TIF for an expansion of design services for Country Club and Perkins Road. And then that's, and that's coming from the Carl Sanitary Sewer Study Project, which requires less than expected. In the VERF fund, this, this is, this is kind of different. We're proposing to budget $300,000 for a contingency. What we've been seeing is that from 2020 to 2023, the price of vehicles and equipment increased considerably faster than what our plan provided for. So increases actually increased about 21.6% over that period, and our normal 2% annual increase just didn't keep up. That was about 6.1% compounded. So with that contingency, that it would allow us to do some allocations when things come in over budget. But this would not be for new items. This would be for scheduled items that are coming in over budget. And it would be for replacing equipment with like equipment, no upgrades. And then in the IT fund, which somehow I do not see in the memo, but $26,000 for additional, an additional server for storage. The IT manager has advised that, that this will cause a problem if we do not increase our storage capacity soon. So, I'm happy to answer questions.
Anybody have questions? Chandra.
Okay, so we're in the VERF contingency part again. I'm trying to understand it. So, equipment that is ready to be, is old and needs to be replaced, though, that 300,000, if the cost to replace that is more, that's where the extra will come from.
Right, we would get it, we would use a piece of that 300,000. And I have to be honest, I mean, that's a really rough figure. 300,000 may not be enough, and we may be back asking for additional funds at some point, but I didn't, I didn't want to ask for too much either, so.
Is it vehicles that we're replacing, or a combination of things?
So, so in, in the VERF, we have passenger vehicles, we have heavy equipment, like our sewer vector truck.
I just didn't know if you knew specifically, like, anything.
It's, it's, it's really anything that's considered capital equipment. So our definition is something that has a purchase price of $5,000 or more, and has a useful life of at least five years. So it could also be, I'm trying to think of some other examples, like, I don't know if this is over, I don't recall if this is over 5,000, but we have a folder machine we use in finance that stuffs, folds invoices and stuffs them in envelopes, things that could be any equipment.
James.
So if I could follow up on Chandra's question, how did you come to $300,000? Is it related to how this 20.1.6% is playing out versus what we see, or?
So some, some of the items that are on the schedule, I think we already addressed in a previous budget amendment, but I looked at our list of all the items due for replacement there, and I said, okay, if we just had an extra 10%, could we make this work? So that's about 10% of the items currently scheduled for replacement.
And I, and I heard the IT request for $26,000 server. Why isn't that considered a capital item that would come out of VERF?
So actually, some, because IT is an internal service fund, some particular pieces of equipment are treated differently there.
But it is over $5,000.
Correct, it is.
And it's, you can think about it as capitalized, as a lifecycle.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody else have questions? Mary, thank you. Go ahead, Maryelle.
So Elizabeth, I'm, I'm trying to situate the capital improvement fund increase of 5.17, because you do reference the fact that we'll be issuing bonds. So I know that in the, the budget book, we have kind of like, here's the plans, this is for how much we're going to be spending, and so forth. So it's the 5.17 million is in addition to what we currently have in the budget, right? And so even though we don't necessarily have the 5.17 in the bank, I'm trying, I'm trying to marry these two things.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try. If I don't get this right, let me know.
Okay.
So yes, 5.17 is the total increase in expenditures in the capital improvement fund. And we do plan to issue debt for some of the costs related to the fire stations, which, for which we will pay debt service in future years, and that is built into the capital improvement plan, and I feel like I missed part of that.
Well, I think what I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I know we have a balance in the general operating fund, right, but we're allocating 5.17 million additional dollars to the city facility improvement project. But are we saying that we're going to take that out of our operating fund until we issue the debt?
No, for, so, okay.
We're just allocating. We're just allocating it on paper?
We're allocating on paper from the capital improvement fund, right? So the way we budget is if we're going to issue a purchase order and encumber funds now, like in this fiscal year, then we would show that money in this fiscal year's budget, even though it may not actually get spent to next fiscal year. But also, there's another, there's another, I'm going to try and make this simple. So we have what we call pooled cash accounts. So all of our money for all of our funds basically, basically gets accounted for as one pot. And, and I think of it as a pie chart, because we know we're constantly like keeping track of how much of that belongs to each and every fund. So it is, a fund by itself can't actually run out of cash, right? Because they're sharing that pool.
Yeah, okay, all right. And then my next question was, we've had this conversation about electric, electrical traffic signals. Is this, and we only had, I think, one person who actually could work on the signals. Is Tim still here?
Yeah, Tim's here.
Tim, can you give me a little more details about the electrical traffic signal?
Sure. Just a little brief history. Basically, since I got here, so that's about a little over three years ago, we lost our electrical supervisor unexpectedly. And we were down, we've been down two electricians for that entire term, of which, point in time, basically, the two electricians we still had on staff, one was really dedicated to maintaining our traffic signals and keeping them operational. And the other one was maintaining Julie Locates as a requirement. So we didn't have time to fix and repair streetlights and some other things that became critical. So we ended up coming back, getting an on-call service agreement with Champagne Signal and Lighting here, that they would do some of these on-call things. They would take care of some knockdowns and stuff. But only up to the extent that we had budget from vacancy savings from the staff positions that were unfilled. So this is another round of that. We've had those vacancies. We did, good news, we did hire one electrician. So we're up to three now, out of the four. But we have had vacancies throughout the entire fiscal year, so we're just repurposing more of that money. Last I checked with our electrical supervisor, we had 33 items that were on the backlog between knockdowns, repairs, things like that. And only about 18 of which were funded. And then we were kind of struggling with some supply chain issues simultaneously. So this is just more money to kind of keep playing catch-up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Chandra.
Sort of rethinking last week's meeting about the arborist, and then this comes up with the 99,000. Is there any movement on hiring arborist, or are we just going to continue contracting?
The arborist is somewhat electrician, but much fresher. So we lost one of our two arborists, I think, last August or September. And then we lost our second one in late December. So we are without an arborist, other than our city arborist, who's also our arborist supervisor. So what we're doing is repurposing vacancy savings there to get a contracted arborist to come in and at least keep up with systematic tree pruning, and to assist with emergency on-call stuff that we can't handle ourselves. But the arbor technician position is posted, I believe, for active recruitment.
Okay, thank you.
James.
So essentially, this, these public works items, it's no new money. It's just salary money that we're not spending. We're retargeting to contract work.
Correct.
Okay. If I could follow up a little bit on the TIF for, the capital improvement TIF for funds for Country Club Road and Perkins Road. So just about $100,000 coming from the TIF for funds. Is, TIF 4 is one of the ones that is getting close to expiring, right? How, how much is left after we use this $100,000 in TIF 4, do you know?
Well, if we look at this worksheet, the estimated ending funded balance at the end of this year is like 3.4 million. But I'm not, I don't have.
But TIF 4 is the one we connected to the downtown TIF, so we could move the money if TIF 4 ends.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Grace, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, please. Before question.
Talk loud, Grace.
Oh, sorry. TIF 4, I agree with spending those monies as soon as possible for community good, equity focused. It does expire, I think, 2025. I have a question about borrowing for the fire stations. About if the increase of 5 million would cover the expected cost. And the memo says something about issuing 10 million in debt in 2024. I don't know if that was the plan, or I thought there was something about 10 million set as a high bar. Wonder if you could clarify that?
I, I didn't hear all of that last part. Can you repeat it?
Yes, if we plan to borrow 10 million in debt for fire stations.
Okay, I, I feel like, I feel like I missed part of this, but.
I think, I think just maybe, maybe she's asking it incrementally. Are we, are we planning on borrowing $10 million?
We're planning on borrowing $10 million in calendar year 2024. We will plan to issue bank-qualified debt, which is limited to 10 million per calendar year. But the overall plan will require more than $10 million in debt. So, or it will require us to get funds from some other source.
What, with the 5.1 million, that's coming from city funding, right? City facility fund? Is that correct?
It talks about 5.17 coming out of the city capital improvement fund.
Oh, yeah.
That sounds like 15.1 million dollars total.
Yeah, I, so I, I haven't laid out the whole plan of financing for the fire stations. So that's, so there's, so we spent money prior to this year. We spent money in last fiscal year. I don't, Will, do you want to help me here?
So the, you have up to $10 million of debt that you can issue in this calendar year, as Elizabeth was talking about. You have a little over half a million dollars of expenditures that occurred last year for architectural, or at least that money was put in a purchase order last year. You have 2.5 million roughly of debt for this project. And then after that, there is a little bit of money, and I think Elizabeth was saying she hasn't quite laid out the plan. There's different options of how you could pay for that. I mean, the default would be the CR&amp;I fund, and then whether or not you issue more debt in the 2025 year. I think Elizabeth can speak to that more, but that's roughly the three components of debt, grants, and CR&amp;I. But that can be spent over several years.
I think the confusion may be the capital improvement fund increased for 5.1 million. Does that include money from the debt that is issued? Because think of it this way, we take $10 million in debt, we take 5.1 million from capital improvement, we've got 2.5 million from DCO, now it sounds like we're spending 17.5 million. So there must be some overlap here in what these figures represent. And I think that's, I hope that's the point that Grace is trying to get to, because now I kind of see that.
Right, so all along, even.
Yeah, thank you for translating.
Thank you, yeah. So all along, even, even if you look at the capital improvement plan that was approved back on June 26, there was an assumption that we were going to issue debt. So that's kind of built in here already.
Right, but if they're only going to cost, as of this moment in time, you know, 14.6 million, why do we need 17.5 million?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay, that, that's.
But I haven't, I haven't, we haven't done all the numbers to kind of like show the project over the life and make a determination of the final.
I just wanted to make sure, like, the capital improvement fund dollar amount wasn't a transition of money from one place to another, because then I would be double counting that.
I understand what you're saying.
Right?
I under, yes.
I think that's the picture that would be helpful to understand a little bit better.
So I, I feel like I'm not quite getting that question, but.
Maybe not.
So, so the plan was all along to pay for the project from the capital improvement fund, and to pay the capital improvement fund back by issuing debt. Correct, yes.
So when we issue $10 million in debt, part of that is going to go to refill this 5.17.
Correct, correct, because.
That's how it's being double counted in the way I laid it out.
Right, because otherwise, there's an opportunity cost here, which is we won't be doing other capital improvement projects. So we need to pay ourselves back in the capital improvement.
So we're not going to be spending more than 14.6 million?
Well, I think we're going to spend 14.4 million in construction, plus all the design amount, plus property acquisition that we've already spent.
But it's not going to, it's not anticipated to grow to 17?
No.
Not for construction.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if, we could have some more information for next week. If there's any way it could be laid out a little more clearly, what's happening with the money swapping, that would be helpful. And my other question was, a little more information with that about the process for approving things, if there would be a council approval for issuing debt, or for anything else with construction, or if this is it. And I'm also wondering if we plan to use the minority hiring goals for all of this construction work.
Okay, let, let me answer the question about debt first. So the city can't issue debt without council approval. So you will see that. It will be a very, it'll, will be a very quick turnaround time thing, and we'll time it to hit a council meeting, because the debt market's kind of moving all the time, right? So there'll be a really quick competitive process where we go to local banks and others that have expressed interest, and we ask them to, you know, give us their best offer, and then we'll bring something to council to approve the debt. If you want to talk about it in the meantime, we can have more discussion about kind of what the whole process looks like. But, yeah, that's, that's the answer on the debt piece. I don't know if Will or Tim wants to jump in on the construction part.
Just from the design perspective, there's not a whole lot more check-ins beyond what we've got planned now. We've got kind of your guys' guidance associated with this budget amendment. At this point in time, the ball's rolling downhill. We'll finalize design permitting, and then we'll go into construction shortly thereafter.
There was the question about minority contracting, Tim.
And the minority contracting, you know, per existing policy, there's nothing specific that is set in stone for any of that stuff. Strategically, the way that we've managed to do this with our construction manager, we actually do have greater opportunities to hit participation goals. Now, that doesn't come without a cost potentially. The ways in which they do that is when they issue their subcontractors to bid on these projects, is they'll essentially issue the package, people will submit, and then the submitters, there will be an opportunity to add a, create, basically create an additive line to meet minimum of 10% goal, and there will be a fixed cost to that. So if someone is a prime subcontractor that's going to do all the electrical work, per se, and they're already minority women or veteran-owned business, they don't have to hit any additives where somebody else may have to go and get a subcontractor to do a portion of that work to hit the 10%, in which case that would be an additive cost potentially. So depending on what you want, what I would say is that it's not, if we set a requirement of 10%, the answer is there's probably going to be additional costs that are not associated with this currently tied to that. Now, the flexibility we have with the way that we've got this structured is we can look at bids, and we can look at kind of a slew of options where it's, you know, we're just going to award lowest across the board on this for the subcontractors. And that result, maybe that already results in a 10% or greater minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned participation that you guys like, in which case we would maybe proceed. And then on the high end, you could look and see like, what's the maximum number we could hit? And what is the cost associated with that upgraded cost? So it's, I would say, as to whether it's a requirement or something that's set in stone that we're going to plan to find answer or not, you know, that would be in your guys' court to decide that. But there may be additional costs associated with that.
Thank you, and I'm wondering how that connects to what you said previously before, that it sounded like design and construction was pretty much underway without a check-in from council again. I'm wondering, can that be one? Was that the plan, or can that be added?
That's correct. I guess I would just ask what level of detail you'd hope to view or be involved.
I think especially with our council goals discussion, and for public transparency and government and all the reasons, I think that it would be great to have those options. I think what you suggested sounded reasonable, have the lowest cost, and what would that percent be? What would be potentially higher cost and a higher percentage? As we're kind of working towards setting our own city policy, I think this could be a learning process.
Sure, you know, I think once we get through bidding, we could certainly kind of bring back kind of some iterative alternatives for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Go ahead, James.
Let's make sure I got the right one here. I move ordinance number 2024-02-004 for city council for approval, not on consent. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Six, Omnibus.
A second.
Motion by James, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Grace, do you have any comments?
Um, yes, thank you. Something I'm wondering in my brain, maybe a question, maybe it's a discussion point about where we leave that alternate bid review in the process. Do we just all agree that that's the plan and we've said it here? Or should that be in a budget amendment or in a separate piece? I'm just wondering if that should be anywhere in here.
I don't, I don't think that's part of the budget amendment that has, doesn't change any budget numbers, at least at this point.
Anything else, Grace?
Uh, no, thank you.
Yeah, James, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I do think budget amendments do tend to be everything in the kitchen sink as far as things that need to be fixed at this point in time. This one in particular has a wide-ranging list of items, and most significant being funding for the fire stations, which, which I, you know, I believe we've reviewed from a programmatic standpoint and have given input on what's going to happen. I, I do understand and do, do appreciate the opportunity if, when the bids come back, things look, let's say, good or bad, depending on how it goes. Usually, they seem to go bad these days, but sometimes they come in good. That we revisit, you know, if it's challenging number in one way or another, then we have to come back and look at what that means, because we're only talking about a specific amount of money here. So if it grows beyond that, we'd have to talk about it anyway, and see if we have to lose programmatic components, or if we have the stomach for additional debt, which I have not heard a lot of, or we have other ways to raise the funds, whether there's additional grants to, to support that. So I don't think it needs, I don't think that question needs to be answered in a budget amendment. What we're doing is setting the parameters for the next step. We're moving some money around in particular areas where we need flexibility, and so I will support this going to council.
Any other comments? Grace, do you have any more comments? Okay, Will the clerk.
No, thank you.
Okay. Will the clerk then, please call the roll. It's an ordinance. Oh, it is, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. 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 The ayes have it, that ordinance will move to the next regular council meeting. Next item is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero zero six, an ordinance vacating an alley, north-south alley between seven oh four and seven oh six East High Street, and Public Works will be presenting, maybe?
No, there is another one, then mark it as, oh, we removed it.
No, we removed it.
Oh, my bad.
Tim, you have the floor.
Can you remind me which one this is again? Was it Green Street, High Street, Lynn Street?
It's the High Street.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, this is a proposal for a right-of-way vacation of an alley between seven oh four and seven oh six East High Street. We provided information in the packet, but the action being requested is to pass an ordinance to vacate the twelve-foot-wide north-south alley, which runs between seven oh four and seven oh six East High Street. The alley is unmaintained, unpaved, and is currently used jointly as side yards for both seven oh four and seven oh six East High Street. The alley should be vacated equally to the two adjoining owners, to the east and to the west, each receiving equal shares. There are no objections received from utility companies or city department heads, but a general utility easement has been requested and will be accommodated for some existing utilities and any future potential utility needs. Here's a visual of it. I think zoom in a little bit more, just for reference, for anybody that would like to see it. This is the existing platted right-of-way here, and the idea would be to split this equally to both existing homeowners on the, either, property owners on either side. There's a view looking at it north from East High Street, just to see what it looks like now. It's unmaintained, vegetated, no paved surfaces. Operations impact, it will remove a potential burden of maintenance activities along this right-of-way, which has happened in the past. We've had unmaintained right-of-ways with trees or something of that nature that go unmaintained and then create a problem, and then it becomes a liability on the city. So, it does remove that potential burden. Budget impact, it removes potential costs for maintaining the active right-of-way. And that's all I've got, and I'm welcoming any questions.
Questions, anyone? Mary Alice.
So, I noticed that there were, there's two properties that are impacted here, and neither one of them gave you a response.
Correct, and that's not necessarily something we're not used to, I'll say.
I, I don't disagree, but it, it feels a little awkward to assign property to people who aren't giving us any response in terms of whether or not they agree or disagree, but we're just saying, hey, here you go.
We're not assigning it, we're vacating our rights to it.
I, I understand, it, it just-
Sure.
From a landowner's perspective.
We've, we've sent letters, and we've sent the petitions, and if people are non-responsive, I don't know that. I mean, it depends on what level of effort you want us to put in to go get that response from people. This is kind of the norm. We send letters to educate them on what we're doing. We send follow-up petitions to see if they will, free and clear, sign away the petition to vacate this. This wasn't necessarily initiated by, initiated by the homeowner, the property owner. Sometimes there, the petition typically is a form when it's initiated by a property owner, but we still use it when it's initiated by the city, just because it's a convenient form to use to kind of get their consent and understanding of what's happening.
So, is it, are, are we systematically going through these odd pieces of? I know we vacated some of them, but it was also the first time, I think I've seen it, where they didn't request us to vacate it.
Uh, we've done others where they don't request us to vacate them. Recently, probably in the last two years, we took a hard look at all of these kind of either miscellaneous sliver properties or sliver right-of-way sections that are, you know, to, for better purposes, is just, we don't have a use for them anymore. So, we check with utility companies, we check with other department heads to see, is there a justification to maintain this? Then, we contact property owners to see if they have either, you know, sometimes, some people are uninterested, or they would like their half-vacated to the other person because of natural barriers or something that's pre-existed over time, in which case, we would still, the, the normal process for us would be to vacate unless we get a consent of that form. We would vacate equally how the, however the right-of-way was created. So, you'll see on some of these other ones, it's created as part of a subdivision that abuts another subdivision. We don't split that fifty-fifty, it goes to the subdivision in which it, it got taken out of the first time.
And this was generated in eighteen ninety-eight?
Yeah, we have a lot of these that, you know, they've just kind of been there since the original urbanization, and they were just never needed or never used.
Okay, thank you.
James.
Just, just to confirm, the, the actual property line, is the yellow line on the right?
The property line actually bisects this.
Oh, it goes right down the middle?
Correct, that's why we're vacating to both sides. We have approximately a six-foot right-of-way on each property.
And, and so, that property is already part of the lot?
Correct.
It's just our right-of-way that-
Correct.
We're vacating, so I, it's not, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and right-of-ways are essentially taken from properties, essentially, and then they're vacated back to them when unnecessary.
Anybody else have a question? Grace, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to further clarify that. Thanks for getting the, getting me partway there for Mary Alice and James in understanding with your previous questions. So, if I can just reiterate, then, vacating the right-of-way, this doesn't change these parcels and their properties, it's just our right to it, is that correct?
Correct, we, we're just vacating our rights to that, that, the, the property line is not changing, we're just vacating our right-of-way.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so a little different than when we actually own it and sell or-
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero zero six, an ordinance vacating an alley, north-south alley between seven oh four and seven oh six East High Street. Onto City Council on the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice, any more discussion? Hearing none, is this a voice vote, clerk? Okay, let's do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, aye, all oppose, say nay. The ayes have it, that ordinance goes on to the next consent agenda at the next city council meeting. Next item, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero zero seven, an ordinance vacating an alley, north-south alley in the block bounded by North Weber Street, railroad to the north, North Lynn Street, and the east-west alley north of East Main Street. Tim, I hope you understand all that, go ahead.
Another alley vacation, primarily unmaintained, unused, unpaved. Action being requested again is passing an ordinance to vacate the twelve-foot-wide north-south alley bounded by North Weber Street, railroad on the north, North Lynn Street, and the east-west alley north of East Main Street on the south end. The next picture will help you with that description. The statement of the issue is, this alley is unmaintained, unpaved, and partially occupied by the properties to the east as backyards. This alley should be vacated solely to the owners of the east of this alley because this alley was completely within the subdivision to the east upon creation. So, the subdivision to the west of this alley is a different subdivision in which no part of this platted alley ever existed. There were no objections when contacting utility companies or city department heads for the vacation, but a general utility easement has been requested and will be accommodated for existing and future utility work. Here is a location map of this location, so railroad on the north, Lynn Street on the east, Weber on the west, and then this, this is the east-west alley north of Main Street that bounds the south edge. And then, this is a couple of views of this, a view looking north from that east-west alley on the south end, and then a view looking south from the railroad. Back down it, you can see it's a overgrown, vegetated area that's unpaved and generally unused for right-of-way purposes. Operations impact, again, removing the potential burden of maintenance activities along this right-of-way, and the budget impact is removing potential cost of maintenance activities along this right-of-way in the long term. Are there any questions?
Questions? Grace, do you have any question?
No, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion? Oi, go ahead, Ma, Mayor.
Just for public transparency, the Chris Evans listed as a property owner here is not the Chris Evans on council.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, uh, okay, so do I have a motion?
I will move on to the consent agenda for approval, ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero two zero- seven, thank you. An ordinance vacating an alley, north-south alley in the block bounded by North Weber Street, railroad to the north, and North Lynn Street, and the east-west alley north of East Main Street.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra, any discussion? Grace, any comments?
I was just, okay, I guess maybe it's still a question, wondering if we typically put such details of people's names and addresses and phone numbers in this paperwork publicly?
It's a PIN number.
The parcel information's publicly available.
Okay, one of them is phone, also, I know there's PIN, but there's also phone. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Grace, any other comments, Grace, are you done?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll call for another voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say nay. The ayes have it, that ordinance will move to the consent agenda for next city council meeting. Next, I, next item is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero zero eight, an ordinance vacating an alley, north and south alley, west of six oh six East Green Street.
All right, we have another one, another right-of-way vacation here of an alley. Action being requested again is an ordinance to vacate the twelve-foot-wide north-south alley, which runs along the west side of six oh six East Green. This alley is unmaintained and currently solely used as a driveway slash backyard by the six oh six East Green Street residents. This alley should be vacated solely to the owners of the six oh six East Green Street property because this alley is completely within the subdivision to the east. The subdivision to the west of this alley is a different subdivision in which no part of this platted alley has ever existed. There were no objections from the utility companies or city department heads, again, about the vacation, but a general utility easement has been requested and will be accommodated for existing and future utility work. Here is a location map of this, bounded on the east at Anderson, the west Grove, and the south, East Green Street. Here's a picture of the proposed alley looking north from East Green Street at six oh six East Green Street. You can see it's, you know, partially paved there on the, the one side, but mostly just vegetated space, unpaved, thoroughfare along that alley right-of-way. Operational impacts, remove the potential burden of maintenance activities along this right-of-way. Budget impacts, remove the potential cost of maintenance activities along this right-of-way. Questions?
Any questions? Mary Alice.
So, there's actually an objection to this one, one of them. It looks like that's the only person who actually responded, I think, is the one person who said, don't do this. Does, do you have any further details on that?
I think that response was, we don't want any of this. I think that was one of the residents to the west saying, I don't want you to vacate this to me, which is not what we're proposing.
Okay, and yet, they're to the west, yeah. All right, and then, just, just for fun's sake, I think this one was in eighteen seventy-six.
Grace, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I will move ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero two zero zero eight, an ordinance vacating the alley, vacating an alley, north-south alley west of six oh six East Green Street, to the city council consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya, any more discussion? Grace, do you have any comments?
No.
Is that a no?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, again, this will be a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say nay. The ayes have it, that ordinance moves to the next regular council meeting on the consent agenda. Last item is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero zero three, are a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana, the African-American Heritage Trail interpretive sign adjacent to twelve oh five North Goodwin Avenue.
Okay, so, this is one for a license agreement. Anybody occupying public right-of-way with permanent or semi-permanent fixtures above grade or below grade requires a license agreement with the city. Anything above grade requires council approval to enter into that agreement, so that's what this is here. The action being requested was to authorize the mayor to execute the license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana for an interpretive sign in the area adjacent to twelve oh five North Goodwin. Brief background is, this proposed interpretive sign would commemorate the African-American Heritage Trail in the Dr. Ellis neighborhood. I'll zoom in a little bit here, but this is roughly the proposed location here at the corner of Goodwin Avenue and Ellis Drive. The yellow area is roughly where this location, the sign would be located. And then, on this side is kind of a mock-up of what the sign would look like, and then a picture of the proposed location. I've got another slide that kind of zooms in on the sign itself for you guys to see after this. This is the proposed sign that would be there. It basically commemorates Dr. Ellis, who the subdivision was named after. It gives some historical information as to the creation of the, the subdivision and some of the other historical components about Dr. Ellis himself. Sorry about that. Uh, the recommendation would be to authorize the mayor to execute the license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana for an interpretive sign in the area adjacent to twelve oh five North Goodwin Avenue. If it's passed, the mayor will execute the agreement, staff will record the agreement, and Experience Champagne Urbana will construct the sign. Any questions?
Sharice.
I have one question. I know prior to the sidewalks and the lights being put in, roughly in eighty-seven, maybe, I'm not quite sure when those were put in, I wasn't living here at the time. The property line went all the way to the curb. So, I was interested in knowing, after looking at this, if the owner or resident, well, the owner of twelve oh five Goodwin, if, if that property, even on that easement, had been annexed to the city somehow, or the city bought that land before putting the sidewalk there, because those sidewalks weren't there when I was a kid.
I, I can check on that, but I would guess that the, the platted lines you see here were, were actually the platted lines of the original subdivision.
So, I just, I just, I'm just saying, historically, considering, you might want to check that that land actually is city land and not the property of the owner of twelve oh five Goodwin.
Sure, and I, you know, not speaking out of turn, but Dan Rothenmiller, a professional land surveyor, typically vets these things. I can't speak for him, he's not here, but he's very diligent about that. I mean, that's kind of his primary role, is vetting property, property lines, boundaries, right-of-ways, et cetera. So, I would bank that this is a very accurate depiction of what the, the right-of-way is in this area, but we can verify.
And that's what I'd like to know.
Any other questions? Grace, do you have any questions?
I had a similar one to Sharice about, you know, it being city-owned, and it sounds like, yes, as far as we know, right? And still, interesting- And still interested in confirmation on that.
Yes, I would say with 99% certainty it's city, but we will confirm.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I was also wondering about landscape maintenance, um, with that, because it sounds like Experience Champagne Urbana is gonna, it said, maintain the sign, but I'm wondering about like mowing and weeds and stuff like that, if the city would still do landscaping or if they are in charge of that.
For parkways like this, uh, the city ordinance is that adjacent property owners take care of the premise, which includes the parkway. So the adjacent homeowner that's already maintaining, that would continue to maintain that.
Okay, and do you know if they've been in contact about this thing going up and...
I'm, I'm not sure, I'll be honest.
Still expected to maintain it? Because I think that would definitely be, uh, some good communication to Sharice's points about, regardless of even ownership, um, if we're putting something in, yeah, those right-of-ways, they do kind of just feel like an extension of your yard and, yeah, it could be a lot that someone's coming in and putting in a sign and then you're supposed to keep up with it, um, which is the regular expectation, but I would want to know if there was a, a city amenity going in.
Uh, my understanding is that, I know, um, looking through sites in Ellis subdivision, I, um, I talked a couple of times with Darius and John Zeeman, so I'm assuming, because they talked to me as well, so I'm assuming that they may have talked to the owner or resident at 1205, because I know that they knocked on a few doors, re- uh, trying to figure out where the, the best location for that sign would, would be. And, um, one of those doors was mine, so, so, um, um, I'm assuming that they have talked to the owner or at least the resident, I, I, because to be honest, I don't know who, who, who resides in that house. So, um, my, my concern was not that that hadn't been done as much as, is that that easement was in fact, or, or is in fact city property and not the owner. And I understand what the maintenance of the easement is, but I also understand that, um, there weren't sidewalks in my neighborhood when I was growing up and I don't know how or when, um, any, uh, agreements with the city getting those, um, those properties to put sidewalks there.
Yeah, I, I, Dan, Dan can trace that history to see where and when those were created and if they were adjusted at some point.
Okay, and if the owners ever got any payment for...
Yeah.
For that even. So, just thought I'd, uh, bring that up at the time, right now.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll do another voice vote, uh...
We need a motion.
Oh, yeah, we should probably do that.
I'll move resolution number 2024 dash 02 dash 003R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Experience and Experience Champagne Urbana, African-American Heritage Trail interpretive sign adjacent to 1205 North Goodwin Avenue, um, onto city council for approval.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Now we'll have a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, that will move to the next city council meeting. Regular, regular agenda, right? Okay, regular agenda. All right, that takes us, thank you, Tim. That takes us to council input and communications. Anyone have anything to say? Grace?
Uh, actually not right now, thank you.
James?
Um, I did, I did want to ask council, um, we, we did have a lot of, uh, good feedback tonight, uh, from the community. I do want to ask council to take a look at, um, some of the other cities that have passed resolutions. I think it's important for us to look at that for two reasons. One, um, the language in those resolutions, uh, is more, some of them are more like the EU resolution that was mentioned earlier, uh, which, where there was some discussion in the community about language that groups could share, and I think that's important. The other thing I want to point out is that in a number of these situations, the vote was fairly contentious. In fact, Chicago, the mayor had to break, break a tie. Iowa City was 4-3 and that was even with modified language. And when I say modified language, I, I'm talking about various degrees of calling for hostage release and, um, cessation of violence by Israel and by Hamas. So, I, you know, the, the community's bringing us their ideas. I do think it's important, somebody said you, it, we, we trust you to do your due diligence on some of these things. I, I would encourage us to do so because I think there's, um, paths forward that we can learn from maybe some of our other colleagues out there in, um, city government. Thank you.
Sharice.
I just wanted to comment and say something about Karen Sims' presentation. I wish she had shown them her PowerPoint, but in short, what I got from her, um, from what she said is that, um, oftentimes people do a lot of talk, but their actions are so loud, folks can't hear what they're saying. And, um, we need to keep that in mind, us as well.
Anybody else? Okay, with nothing else on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.